I would like to discuss item number three. In this, this is different.
Different time.
If I'm understood it right, State and Old Carolina set a record yesterday. UK. Columbus County alone has got thirty-eight UKs in one day. All that said, with caution, we have got to start something up. I'm only gonna make a suggestion. Councilman will. What decision? My suggestion is approve along turn around. Opening high on Sixth Street Southwest, Ninth Street Southeast. Thirtieth Street Southeast. I'm hoping to open the boat lot. And fifty-third Street Southeast and Thirtieth Street. Y'all will discuss all this allowed fishing on the beach with. Cooler, no chairs, catch and release only. Allowed fishing. Keep it. And the Anticoast Waterway, which is better part of seventy-seventh Street, I think it is crab deck. Open part three quarters. Opening Bill Smith Park. Open for discussion.
Several points, Mr. Mayor. I believe the vast majority of these items are supported by the unanimous council. But before we enter them. Talk a little bit about part three. Part three will be opened, but there will be no golf cart rentals. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. There'll be no golf cart rentals, credit card only. They can open up a prepaid program that they have through the rec. Program they already have. The rest rooms will remain closed at this time. We'll advertise that as well. I'm sure the public knows that before they come. But there will be no golf carts and credit card only.
Socially distancing itself to the extent possible, which other than on the grid should be eminently achieved.
Yes, sir. And also if I go do a stagger, P-toms where every other P-tom, you go ahead and cancel to space some further parts like the golf course.
Excellent.
We'll be able to have those activities just like you can fish.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
I'm great with.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Anybody want?
We're fine with that.
Wanna make a motion on that?
I'm good.
I'm good. Okay. But I'd like, uh, that's what we said here. We've got a calendar date. Came out with a whole. But I'd like to settle, put this out to the public, so the public actually knows. Because we keep doing this. And they just see the little things we're doing. I think they need to point out, like we have plans here to look at this town, they need to give a look at.
You said a date, even y'all, y'all can modify it.
I think we need to set a date.
On the court.
If we follow the governor's phases he's got in place. And the way the plan shows right now, we need to set a date. Follow my manager, follow the governor's plan, the phase. Change the governor's executive order.
And that'd be June the sixth.
Or June the sixth.
I don't know if we're having a plan. And especially in these difficult times. Where being a day, getting a drawing, a draw, emphasize. We need to get the thing, my business activity, a day for our call. Even if it's an exercise. Is, when we get in. Not only the actions of the governor, but the governor's state policy. So he's talking about transphobic metrics. Reflections on the population. Uh, possible path of diversity metrics have not been yet, in fact, none to the wrong direction.
Yeah.
So if we say, either it's two six, it's two fifteen. That's a subject to action, government, police, action on the lead these, in favor of these. Plan, plan. We have to be open up short-term account, it's going to be exposed to much larger problem.
Visitors, we could be in a very obvious situation.
This is why, this is why, it's projected data, it is.
That it can be modified any time.
Down from, our short-term goals are not started.
Well, I want everybody to think about this too. Because we're seeing this now at the facility. Starting short-term change to this. Buying all this stuff. And we're coming because our residents were better struggling. Because the products are running low. We start allowing people to come into town, buying all this stuff. The vacation's gotta be.
I understand that, but they, they are also our residents that. I'm asking you to consider. I understand if that was going without. He's gonna make an announcement that he did not. Short-term rentals. I think that's gonna be a game changer for us. It's just an opinion.
May I introduce something else? Kelly, is it your association of the league?
Going through today, we're gonna ask if we could recess this meeting and then also recess the items that we have would carry over to the next meeting. So we don't have to call another special meeting for the end of next week.
Right.
I think the governor's thing is May eighth. So if we wanted to reschedule on that day or the day before, that'd be up to y'all. But that would give y'all another date to be able to look at whatever you set down, like the mayor was discussing. Those items could be committed, approved, then attended, you know, for a word to use there.
Well, I appreciate protection here. Protection in our organization, well, safety, you know, and our, I mean, obligation to the business community. And, you know, so the governor said, oh, I'm not a help, is received by, and I have a proposition, and that factor was important. So I'd rather not pick a date today, what I'd rather do is say, we have a plan. Let's read people on everything over to do tomorrow, the governor said today. And be in better position, I think, reading people, let's stay out here, contingent probably a day.
Hopefully, I would like to meet earlier. But with the quick rise that we've had. That we can modify. If anybody wanted to add in there that our intentions, if possible, to shore, we will meet. And we need to meet for however many times it takes. I won't get back over, right up. But I don't wanna be. And I did look at the calendar, it's headstanding. Is it first, is it Monday or June the sixth? If that would happen, but still, we gotta keep the language out that we will modify. And as many as they wish. And maybe the world turns around in several weeks early, oh, God, it looks like ratings going down. This is our struggle. I would love to see government let somebody, let twenty percent capacity or something.
There's those.
How, how with the short-term metrics as well?
Yes.
Yeah. That's just too bad.
Correct.
We can, he can open rest by touch of hard capacity.
The second phase. It goes in. Yeah, second phase was its plan to do a portion.
Us to work, I feel like we need to eat restaurant, some restaurant capability to do it. We don't have it. And everybody comes short-term around. If we install everybody, that is a big concern now.
Anyway, what is the, the new public supposed to open?
Intensively, June, middle of June.
Middle of June.
Yes, sir. The wastewater system was a vacuum sewer system. They're about two to three months behind on reviews and acceptance, final certification. So we're asking to take or allow a pump and haul permit if something failed or something didn't work. Or if it came back where they made a design calculation and something needed to be shut down, so they don't have to shut down the store itself. And so they can get open, we are, we are going to file for a pump and haul permit as well until the other permit is approved.
Okay, so that should, that should help, uh, in the summer, grocery situation.
That's what they've given to Steve and Brooke so far, is sometime, they haven't given a final date, and it's all because of the wastewater problem.
And, and I agree with Ms. Bailey, we need to get this town open just as soon as reasonably possible, with still keeping safety in mind, but. We need to get our town back open.
Is there something different with the audio, I mean, the audio here, that the audio is terrible among everybody here, that the audio. We got something different?
No, ma'am.
The schedule that we gave y'all, it's sort of color-coded, the draft, it was the O-O one. Basically, everything that the mayor just stated a minute ago. We'll take the items from May fourth. Allow the fishing, swimming, surfing on beach, still no sitting, chairs, tents, coolers, everything that the mayor discussed. We would move out of there if y'all want to start that tomorrow, and then on May first. That would be no problem, then open up Bill Smith Park, Dog Park, and the kayak launch out there, long-term rental resume. The boat ramp at fifty-fifth, the associated parking lots for that. The part three, then the items that the mayor addressed, my kayak launches.
Is there something on long-term rentals?
I think short-term rentals was just classified less than ninety days.
Ninety-one days, and are people who are actually six months to a year, rental agencies rent at an average time. The long-term things require.
Right.
I was thinking the language was ninety-one days or more for long.
We go that direction.
As long as they know, we're spot checking for them to rent those.
Yeah, we don't want like the ninety-one day contract this week, the best one. When only charging the time they stayed, that's half the pay a lot. I don't know exactly how to handle that.
Mr. Mayor, we've, uh, we're gonna deal with that, speaking of, it's gone door-to-door, we get complaints or people call in. Pazzle meeting is having the same problem now with billows, starting to fill up. If you're the property owner, like y'all discussed before, there's not a whole lot we can do.
We'll have to deal with this. That kitchen don't come up with it too.
I hope we don't have to deal with it much longer.
Let me ask y'all, what y'all think about this too, since we're opening up swimming and putting some of the Bill Smith Park, the kayaks. Didn't we allow the skate park to be open unsupervised? Didn't we allow that to stay?
Skate, skate park.
Skate park, all those things on that end, y'all, looked at as little parking lots associated with it. I'm not talking about parks, I'm about letting kids, since they're out of school. It was just a park. People up there anyway, a lot of them walk there. It's not a supervised thing either. Put the limits, no more than ten, like anything else, and they're gathering.
Six foot separation.
Allow that to open up if he gets them throughout the school. I mean, they do pretty well up there anyway.
And the other thing I was gonna ask the mayor was, did, did you include the blue port?
I'm here too.
Blue port.
Yeah.
If you allow that, then it'll be using that.
Yeah.
And then you want those, those.
I didn't know what I was, that's what I'm challenging. Leave with it, and it busts on that.
So, well, you'd be receptive to defining long-term rentals as beyond the time days?
You're telling me, long-term rentals, we will stay over, this is considered one year. Long-term rentals.
I'm sorry. So I'm very comfortable with that.
Yes, we have to trust our realtors.
We have. Not an objection. Actually, meeting next. I think, uh, we'll probably snap, we didn't get one, take, so we get there, it's two of the government wants to say today. I'm looking at the plan, it's two to three weeks. Resilience, you're seeing metrics that are positive. Four to six things they mentioned, which is. Uh, leases. So maybe in June, for the first.
So you're willing to let. And our visitors, especially other things that are opening up. You're willing to let tourists and our visitors go.
But all the good things you do is standing water, and herd, protect our citizens. And I'm a different kind of, we may be open up. We get worse, and we're not like any other people. People will come back to us, they won't come here. I've got a whole lot, and I think, uh, just speak for myself, I think we need to take the most conservative approach we can to the budget and the citizens' health. People will, we need to restart economic. Tourism, socializing, economic, it's too easy to, even for me. We get it wrong. And we get it wrong. We asked weekly disaster on, on the block, so. Get it past that. It gives us some insight a lot. I think we're ready for Memorial Day. The airport and numbers don't look good right now, so prefer to wait.
Those things could change, correct?
Yeah. And Cooper says we got plenty of capacity in the. Of course, that's a no brainer.
Let's go to the ten. We give them need some restaurant capacity.
Right, you're right.
And we also have a memo, they're going to make reviews to, uh, commercial, anybody that's ever been there. Uh, my next base shield, which is down, I think it's supposed to be doing that somewhere between May and June. But that just tells us that they still have that model five, we're on it. But we're still waiting ourselves for things to look at.
When is our next meeting?
Regular skating meeting?
Yeah, but don't, you need one before then, or don't we need two?
Yes, sir, that's what I'm gonna ask you to be able to rescind it until Thursday or Friday of next week, whichever day works best for you. The continuous meeting to that meeting.
And at that time. Hopefully, it's upon nine C rewrite declarations.
But is that saying open for things that you mentioned?
Open the thing we said. Tomorrow.
Okay.
It's still going. People that hear us know we want to open. And know our concerns about short-term rentals, and I want to get there.
I think the meeting has a, uh, we want to make the governor's decision, or very much, um. We'll go for next week, it'll be a short meeting. And I'll take, also, yes, if you like, and I can make sure I'm comfortable with it. I agree with you, I'm more, you know, for comfortable with this next week. We need all those, it's a long, it'll be a picture, it's gonna be, we'll select a date.
Eight is on Friday.
I have a construction meeting on Thursday. We never.
I'm flexible, sir.
I'm not very flexible.
He also.
May eighth, yes, yes. Whatever, where's your pleasure? I'm here with that.
Afternoon works better.
Afternoon is good for me.
One o'clock on the eight.
I'm good.
Yes, sir. Instead of adjourning today, if you'll just recess.
And what, what the mayor said, you said that was the part?
As it is now, correct? And then, then, at fifty-fifth Street, parking will be the pitch of parking lot, not no parking. Fifth Street.
The boat ramp.
Yeah. The way we're gonna write it up is the boat ramp, northeast fifty-fifth, and the associated parking lot. As you're referring to. We have the piling part three golf course, Bill Smith Park, the kayak launch at Bill Smith Park. And then on your, uh, items that you addressed earlier, you wanted to add fishing, swimming, and surfing. Uh, but still keep the no sitting, chairs, tents, all the, all the nodes still stay.
Mr. Kelly, can I ask, we're, can I ask you, being, being as part of the search of boat ramps that we get. Signage up before we get trailers in the right way, we'll be ticking.
Yeah, we're.
Most down by fifty-fifth Street is, they will put their boat in and they will not go to the lot. They're half on the road and half off. Can we put no parking there, fifteen minute parking there, or whatever?
Yes, sir. And the last year, you asked us to put some from here to there, in the corners, so we can just increase.
People that do put boats in, it's, it's a mess. You can do the work.
Yeah, we'll make them use the lot only, here going forward anyway. Then you had the kayak launches that you wanted to add in, uh, the skate park, and on the, uh, long-term rental, say, when your contract are long.
The kayak, the kayak launches, can we limit the number of vehicles allowed to park at each one? Because I don't see a whole mass of people with kayaks.
But they do, they get their kayak in the water and all.
Number of people who park in that parking lot, maybe three or four, that's it.
And what are we accomplishing doing that, Jim?
We're gonna look at the ones the mayor.
My family, yeah, some of them.
Need to be.
Yeah.
The way we, anything on the ICW, we would open up, because it touched that, like Maymore Park.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And if y'all want to add that in there, we can add that in there now too, the crab dock that the mayor talked about. We just wanted to open up all parks on ICW and associated with those, and I think we can just say that, and that'll be the broad, that carries everything.
Long as it maintains social distance.
And that'll be included in the amendment that the mayor has.
I like that.
Requested, uh, TT, they were, uh, see, or complained about how busy, how dangerous we have to drive, and it's people continuing to exceed the speed limit. And that a lot of jog, it's like, our control could just give them a little more attention.
See it.
Lot of cars.
There's no, here, there's no way you can tell how fast a car is going by looking at it go by. There is a lot of activity that has become a, an overtime.
This is not in the declaration, and it's state road, but does anybody need to ask him, go ahead, lower the speed limit to thirty-five on the beach drive? Or is that not a good idea?
What's the date for that?
I think we lowered on Memorial Day though.
Lowered on Memorial Day.
I think we're going to.
Just so it be automatic.
May.
Very sure it's right around Memorial Day.
Oh, we drive down thirty-five anyway.
There's in Memorial Day on the, with it, sit.
He'd take a vote on this so that everybody's in same agreement.
I don't think we need a vote, is that all in agreement?
There it is.
We will work on the end of the decorations, please, and get the mayor to come in tomorrow after we send it to Brian for him to, for the verbiage to write, and get him to come tonight, and talk to me tomorrow.
Are we going to, uh, help spread the word to the public? Gonna put it on the, do we have that new website up yet?
We'd, it'd be on the website, Facebook, Lisa sends everything out on all three networks that she has. Kyle will broadcast it out through his new thousand people, and we could put it on the electronic signs. We'll tell him no tents, no chairs, no.
Yeah, that's good.
This goes a long way of leaving some pressure, I think. It ain't.
Basically, on the calendar, this is what they had there for May. We will go ahead and add those to open on the That's what you just got to discuss. It'll be quite a, it seems we're opening up.
Do you think he will go by that? It's the May thirtieth?
I mean, the governor's plan that he has right now will move more to May eighth. If he keeps his fourteen day plateau or whatever he he said his number was going to be, we'll see.
The game's appropriate.
I still think we'll need to have the restaurants open for about a week before we bring in short-term rentals, just so they can get staff in and get everything open back up. Because they're going to have to have the health department inspections and other things like that as well. And I don't think he has them coming open until the twenty ninth.
Mr. Kelly, we spoke earlier today about this issue of opening restaurants. Just curious what the health department position is. Does each restaurant have to have re-inspection open?
They tried to, I left a message out there and I got Steve looking into it too. We're trying to see if they're going to need to be inspected by the health department and the fire department. The governor's thing says reduce seating, they didn't say twenty-five percent, fifty percent. It's a vague, almost like a practice, the distance. Some of the restaurants we talked to, they would just take the tables out to no chairs, leave the tables in place. They're trying to figure out how they're going to open back up as well, but I believe we're going to need to get together at the time, like we discussed this morning. The Porta John's and the Patrums and everything like at the Commando, the Par Three and the Pier is something that we're going to have to address as well.
I'm completely empathetic to the alumna that strong tours are going to have. This is something that can reconfigure easily, some cannot. Okay, you get addition to that, it can reconfigure easily.
It's like a possibility.
So we really need an answer.
Okay.
So we really need an answer, the bare company with the fire inspection, the bare company with the fire department.
Well, and someone that I got inspections.
They were looking at if the restaurant had closed down to have nothing in there. Have to go through one thing.
Right.
Then if they've been open for takeout and they haven't closed up a number of days, they're going to look at a different kind of inspection. And it is tears, man. Literally the same situation here at Town Hall. We have, we're going to have the six foot, we're going to put the tops on the ground. But our hallways are five foot wide, so we're going to have people passing each other in the hallway, just like a restaurant. Everybody to walk there, they're going to have common areas that people go past.
Can be difficult, but it is something difficult, can be, is you have polar dynamics, that's not, let's get the health department to tell us what we need to do. Because it's very hard to short-term rentals and restaurants, so it'll be another problem the mayor suggested.
Anybody have?
I don't, I haven't seen them.
We can go, we can go get one here in a minute, they're definitely. We're going to start a mail-in process for the new stickers. So people can start mailing in their applications. Bring back the rest of the full-time staff, two people next week. Two weeks, it will start mailing them back out. But we didn't put anything on there to mail them out, we didn't put anything on their table to mail out. If you didn't mail it or whatever it is to go back out.
But we kind of have the staff here and they ain't here yet, so we don't need to say, till we got that in line, to say we selling stickers.
Yeah, we can, the electronic ones, if people mail them in, we can mail them back out. We was trying to, a lot of them are going to do that, so we didn't have them come knocking on the door. And we're going to try to have three weeks before we open up Town Hall. So hopefully.
Do we need to rule the other, the other forward?
At some point, yes, sir. I don't think you.
Right now, no.
Because we're only going to be able to go so fast. And you may want to look at it at the end of June, the ballot or something like that.
They were just a question.
Okay, so what's your question to us? Is it maybe charge a dollar for this question? No, I mean, yes, it is what it means.
We would just add that to the application.
I'll say yes.
Cover the costs for my folks, we would just add that to the application.
Oh, sure.
All right, we wait. A dollar on top of what was originally saying.
Ten dollars, I believe.
Yes, it was ten, and I'd be eleven.
Still a bargain, anyway you look at it. Yes, sir.
Any other hours? Budget hours.
Yeah, we need to go back to our work on the awards to service agencies of the community.
Yes, sir. Are you wanting to go to budget now, what do you have?
If we don't have one, then yes.
I don't have one.
The outside agencies, we can either do them first or do them last, that's up to y'all.
Do that first and since that was last. I've got a question, the water rescue. Are they dependent upon this money to operate? Because here's my thinking, and I've discussed it individually with the council members. With the situation that we could be facing for taking zero amounts or outside funding and taking it up next year, but I didn't know about water rescue. And they depended on that money to operate.
Large increase that you see there, if you have it there in front of you is us to pay for one half, some sort of a book they want to buy, and that one half would be sixty-five hundred dollars. And where they're going to get the other sixty-five hundred, fundraising. No, they don't get any.
I just saw a post somewhere that they just got a ten thousand dollar donation from somewhere, I don't know. I can't remember exactly where that was, or if it was intended, it was being announced. But they just got a sample. Can we leave it where they were given that work to have as stands that they could cover? They could actually.
Doable.
Certainly, but open-ended?
I've.
Just for this year.
Safe.
Instead of giving them what they asked for, just make sure that they know. That they're right asking.
Could we send them extra where we get?
Where we did the funding.
I do, I think we need to pick up the phone and call them and say, this is absolutely mission critical, and you already know this. You, because we are, we have an inter bond here, and we're looking at not making any contributions per year. Is that what the absolute wants to happen, or is this? At least to have, we, I think we know.
Yeah, this.
The last thing I want to do is cut, hold it safe.
Yeah, this total here is sixty-five, a little over sixty-five thousand dollars, which would support our employees if necessary. And it's just not a good time.
No, we just don't know, we don't know enough about it, we don't know how to defend it.
Yeah. I have their budget. Their total budget is thirty-six thousand four hundred dollars. They anticipate even twenty-six thousand four hundred from Oak Island, ten thousand from Brunswick County. There's twelve thousand dollars in there for volunteer expense reimbursement, vehicle equipment maintenance, professional services, supplies, facility, equipment, and administrative expenses. That's what's added to the number of sticks. And then on top of that, we have the boat that Mr. had.
What, what does twelve thousand dollars for reimbursement for the members name? Dave, sorry, David.
It's reimbursement, volunteer expense reimbursement, twelve thousand dollars.
What does that mean?
That is for them to keep their certifications, everything they need internally for them to operate. That is what they told us where they paid for that.
And I think we went over that last year. I thought we had done something with that, but that's a lot of, what kind of license do they need to do the water rescue?
Sorry, I just told certifications.
Of.
Each every member, they pay for them.
Who certifies, what kind of certification is, I don't understand, if we can find that out.
Do we, do we need them to come in person and answer any questions?
We could have them come in.
You know, that's a good idea. Yeah. I guess it's a good idea.
That was my only concern on this, and the others will have to look at you next year because it's just not a good time.
Counselor Scott, before you go there. Congress does not have an annual audit. I mean, I find that stunning.
I think the wording says something that we need a copy of the audit, if it's required from that organization.
Yeah, I mean. My agreement for that? Yes, sir.
You're going to ask them to be here next meeting?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, next.
Everyone go all the way back in the back. Start with forty-six.
Say that again.
Forty-six. It's way back there.
All right.
Forty-six.
I don't have forty-six, add forty-six.
Expense part, yes, it's empty.
I have paid.
It should be be tax blend, forty-six. Yep, all right, forty-six.
I got it. Pink.
Sorry about that. Tax fund, fund forty-six is the two percent accommodation, the two accommodation tax that we collect. And if you've got the sheet in front of you, last year we matched it seven hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. And we have dropped that forty percent. I have four hundred seventy-six thousand four hundred. Because, you know, again, it's an unknown, what's going to happen. We've dropped in there pretty substantial, so.
But this is one of the primary self-ops. Councilwoman Bell, I can ask you a conversation. In cheap point. And if school was started in our study. That many would have numbered in the whole way. Because we was part of that, because. Is that correct?
And you are correct, the governor, as you made mention, he did his speech the other day, he was here. There was a possibility that he would have moved his school earlier than Paul. If he does that, then it's going to affect our practices and our accommodation plan. And of course, our budget.
I'm stopping, it seems like it's here. Circumstances change.
I mean, that's only fifty percent.
See, we're going to be taxes, that's pretty much in there every single year, it won't be the same amount. This gets interesting, and this fund transfer of nation, nation of respect is what it hurt by a left in that fund after the two expended, the hundred thousand expenditures that you have. So this transfer amount is all dependent on the action of the ambitious tax. If it's lower, it's like fifty percent, then that would be transferred down to be changed, it will be less. Dependent on the record we get.
This is not a budget item, actually has to be, per se, I mean, anyway. Because even if we say, well, we're going to take you then, it's really not going to matter since we will come in with a budget. Correct? Because it's not, it's not an amount that we're depending on to case that or
This is one of the accounts that it means, another accounts that we're going to look at, other funds here, you know, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-five, they're all independent. You know, you change one, it changes another, I want to show you in a second. So it's, if we don't spend it, it will for another fund.
Give us an example, David, because I take Councilwoman Bell's point.
Okay, where I say transfer of nation of respect. If there's not any questions on forty-six.
Imagine this scenario. You've got people who've lost their jobs. Or they're going to run the other board, you got to be. Second, people who are starting to get back to work, or they're going to run against the competition. So all that needs to be thrown at this area of truth.
And a little carton, obviously, safe.
Yeah, one of the reports out of Ocean Isle, when they opened up, they were already sending in seventy-two percent rentals for this weekend. And they're up to around eighty-five to eighty-seven now, so. And they're up to around eighty-five to eighty-seven now, so. I know the freshness of it being open is one thing, and everybody's all of a sudden able to get out of it. I think as we go longer in the season, we're going to get those regular ones that come. We're not going to get as many new people coming.
But.
Go ahead.
As we said, at the very start of this process. We need to be conservative. If we miss, we need to miss a lot of it. Not if you have a real. You know, we need to just give some. A little bit. We need that just a little bit.
Thank.
That makes sense. The initial fact of demand is perhaps not sustainable. Possible that offers, we need to be careful watching the government's product rules. I think that would be a great one.
We've been very concerned with the process so far. You know, we've cut, could cut out of every single department. I would escape this life time.
And then we can lose season next year. We're hoping we're helping next year.
Jeff, potentially Paul. If this is a case, there isn't a vaccine. This is a worst case scenario too.
Or everything works out great, and the summer's going to be a beautiful thing next year.
It's a beautiful day.
Hey. We were talking yesterday, and so far, if we cut this budget opposed to last year's, is how much?
Yeah, there's a total. We're going to go over that in a few minutes. We'll show you each department, what everything is.
So if you finish with forty-six, you'll turn the beach nourishment. On twenty-seven. Through the revenue sheet. Okay, the first item to have there, Edlorm, that's the. Edlorm tax. That's the initiative. What this number is. State budget. I'm asking the budget versus what we have to share. Again, is it going to be right? Because it's. Is the revenue rate the one that we have to share? Hard to stop attention. We have that on there. Edlorm tax. Can we have to see what the partners will. For the. Three seven six.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-seven, six. That's more than.
I see it.
So from six, nine, four to three, seven, six.
Yes, sir. That's one of the. People lose some. Thirty-eight percent.
I am.
There was.
I have a kind of objection. She talks to you in the house. This on there. The. 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 I can probably tell. And mortgage companies will make sure those taxes.
Yes, that's a guarantee.
I wouldn't dare give you a percentage of your idea, but it used to be way up there.
It is still up there very much so, which is good. I mean, you're. Seven accommodations tax. You can see the effect. But that is current year's budget, one point two eight, ten five hundred and fifty-one thousand. And that's something that happens, happens one hundred and fifty-five. It will affect the. And.
On which page?
It's right behind, it's on forty-seven, seven, forty-six.
So. Are we ready to leave?
It's. This doesn't mean.
So the continuation of what was already approved.
The. The ultimate effect. And we know.
Of course, they want to pay. The issue is.
We have. They come from. To the. Cross.
And. You're in that limbo.
Will you exit this contract?
I'm sure there's a clause in there somewhere as we can get out of it. It's probably a Brian question.
I was giving it as a Brian.
Well, I can. So there, can we get a Brian? Five one?
We'll have you something for next Brian.
Yeah, okay.
I've got down what is that? See what. That's what we have.
Thank you.
We had a shortage on that.
I would say. But this stage. Where. This stage. This is a. Here. Made in. Their.
Yes, sir.
This is a. Some of the taxation. Now very difficult also. In terms of this one, our options, I would like to leave that.
We have on the. Here we go. From. Before you. And. Hopefully. Very specific. We're very. Done. These. So. They don't have a whole lot left, but the amount left on the contract, we had to pay them is a hundred and thirty-six thousand.
What would you say?
One thirty-six.
We're going to. Hold on for a second.
Maybe. Ten thousand. File wrappings.
Yeah, they've done about a quarter of it, and they still have the rest of the file wrappings to do. They have the well, the well, well, tank, still has, has to be put in. And then there's a punch list, one-year punch list that we've provided for them for the electrical framing and items that they're going to need to address before the final payment's made. That was what we brought up to them and their engineer. We've notified them three different times, and they said they're coming. They come and do about one day for the work, and then they head back out. We have notified them. We did, we sent the friendly letter, and then we sent the second letter. I think that's why he's coming.
Is there a guarantee?
There was, yes, sir. There was a one-year warranty on everything that they provided. And since it's taken them this long, we've already told them we're going to extend the one-year warranty from the completion date, and they've accepted that so far.
Sure. That's from.
Pier project again, one hundred and thirty-six is what. They do come down here and finish this work. It's one thirty-six. Your budget. A current budget that we have on the pier and what we got, pier will be completed.
Sure, it will have some ongoing maintenance with the pier. It will be something in this line item. It just won't be one thirty-six. It'll, it'll go back to the regular operational.
One thirty-eight. Your complex.
Yeah, that was one of the things that Mr. Hatton talked to you the other day about separating eight oh one and the pier itself out into two, two maintenance items. So that will be that. All right.
As I said, when you get down to forty-five. They all, you know. About pier complex. If you go all the way back, what we're going to look at. You should have a tab in here. Please, Dave.
And I'm sure the way they might have gone. Is it on the computer or is it on the?
Computer.
In the computers.
In the computer. To speak into the computer instead of the microphone. Is that better?
The same way as the other day.
Will it help? All right, fee schedule. We've had only two changes. Parking fee. Highlighted. It's on the first page.
We're getting ready to change that again. They have one dollar to.
Yeah. You know, other change. Aren't there any changes to the.
Only changes are stormwater fees and parking pickup.
And so we. Money.
As a storm. Electric. How it works.
Is he out?
Yes. It's on the bottom of the page.
On the bottom. You see stormwater fee. Five sixty-three.
Four.
Four fifty. And then we. You had a. Amounts. There's a patch on the back. You can see that.
That was at the retreat. I think it was at the retreat when Johnson Lee.
Any questions on musical? We would ask the department to provide any changes that were announced, the switch. So between now and time. If we have anything, we'll bring it to you and show, you know, bring it to your attention that we have changed it.
So. This fee schedule is reviewed annually by departments and recommendations to you.
If there's something that. You're here.
Well, I would encourage the department, I just want to make sure that we are reviewing these on an annual basis. When's the last time you increased? What can change? What's the system actually raised? Water fee. Water fee and sewer fee, you did McGill Associates came in and did their study two years ago.
Okay.
The way the state has it set up, it's a five-year plan that you get those reviewed, and you could submit a new plan to the state to raise those fees. I know on the other stuff for the taps and things, the cost of materials, we always give the crews to go in and give us a call for what it does, a short tap, long tap. And then we take and look in the budget to make sure that we have those monies accounted for. Things haven't gone up that much. When we changed that, all the electronic meters, we had a bunch of meters that we could put in inventory. And so we've been able to do things in those departments to keep those down. As far as Steve Edwards does, he's been looking at the building curves and what other township in the county is doing, and that's what his rates have been reflecting on as well. And he went up on some of his two years ago.
Two years.
So we are doing an annual review with the departments, and Speedy looks at his, Chris looks at his. He thought about doing a breakout on some fire inspection things, and then the more he looked at it, he thought it was going to be more time consuming and trying to collect it, then it would be worth to put it into the fee schedule.
Thank you.
A couple of years ago, we did a part of your changes at the golf course. He didn't write so many discounts. This. So we're trying. And. This is.
Do debt service? Debt service?
Debt service. Now. Debt. What we. And you recall. What we had to do on the. System. Anything else? The. This is the last year.
I was.
I mean.
We set off as if we're in that situation.
The only positive I see is looking at really.
It is an S plus answer, right? This number is plus answers.
Yeah, I'd like to say my thanks to Mayor Pro Tim. Really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
What takes?
So. Really good. You now have part of the cushion. You may well be. Forecast. After this. So. Not. Possible. I was.
Start with the gloom and doom.
Concrete.
Cut the check for this amount of money. Come on, you'll see. Debt service. Sure. Second one. And you see what. The. The. West. They. The enterprise. We're accepting seven point two million. Out of the. Water. I mean. This will be your twenty-three hour. Fifty-six. Hopefully.
That'd be awesome.
Pipe for speeding.
Be old.
Be wrong.
Keep it.
Just to be clear, we.
It's ten. Seven, I believe, after ten years.
Yeah. Because where the rates are now.
You can see it goes down like any area of amortization schedule. 2035, 36, 2031, 3 million.
Maybe send me a postcard in 2035.
I'll give you 74.
I'll be waving at you from the back of the room.
He's gonna like that.
I'll be up at the podium up there complaining. And while you're turning your book, Water Rescue said they'll be here Friday. That's not a problem. I don't know where it runs with it.
We have another sheet down. Permits and licenses.
It's in the budget comparison. That's where it's at.
Fairly solid for what we do this year. Prior year, motor vehicles and of course penalties. Penalties is what we would have liked to. Get there. To me, 34. Last year, 1.6 million. Very strong year. Tax collection, so all this happened. Be effective. So next year will be just transmit only a very strong way it was going before. I dropped 73%. I dropped it for the collection. See there.
That's what the state recommended. That's what the state recommends.
Again, that's one of the. One of the recommendations that I was wanting to be fully felt uncomfortable. They think it's gonna be down quarter. Never comes late, it's not at all.
Senator, what office is it in?
Yeah.
So it's a small, I don't know, very obvious question. I guess I think.
If you lined up all the accounts in the world, you'd be asking fusion. I mean, the fact of the matter, this is a consumer-oriented economy, and 26 million people are unemployed. So a hard time, hopefully, the sales tax is gonna go up. I'm happy to prove it wrong at this point, but I don't think so. Yeah, because the quarter we just had. It's gonna be truly great depression, unemployment. And, you know, you see Macy's closing two-thirds of their stores, you get the message. So I think, I like where we are, but safe.
And another thing, still a bit stronger, I'm a little bit more optimistic on taxes. Most taxes like a lot of communities do.
The combination tax. We balance our budget like something that's balanced.
Exactly.
Maybe because everybody still buy beer.
More than 74,000. Anticipate $690,000 to come through that department. So speaking of states, let's link the budget. Spatation.
I think that left us about around $50,000.
I didn't want to tell you all.
I'm lost. I don't understand. Why?
Well, last year, we had 453,000. 390,011 dollars. There's always something in every budget that we've done so far since Manhattan's been here that we transfer a small amount from the fund balance.
That's pretty good.
Now, if you want to see the reality of that, what Mr. Boggs said, he'll turn over two. Budget comparisons. Have two things forward in your book?
Right. About two tabs in front of where you are.
That sort of, this sort of tells you exactly where we are. This is the question that Loman asked a minute ago about what was last year's budget and what is this year's budget. Down there at the bottom of the page, you can see how many million dollars less it is this year from last year.
Cut. You've cut the budget substantially.
Well, there's things that, like the pier projects going off, that was 1.1 to 1.5 million dollars. It happens, we're gonna go through that in a minute to show you all what we actually took off. Then you have the transfers that we've been putting back. That Councilman Scott brought up a little while ago. It's a large number, too. And so Mr. Hatton's getting ready to go over.
See that number there? And the majority. Anybody else? State and other revenues. Based on what this government, they're gonna be strong, you know, few shelters, for example. Videos.
Mr. Hatton, just try to. And I'm curious, less interfund transfers. What is an interfund transfer?
That is mine. Capital reserve.
Okay.
Size of the combination moving money.
So that's, that's the hardest to do, right? Because if you're definitely not a budget, if it's 244, you can't put money in. Now, this year, we'll transfer half of the amount.
So if we're right, it should be fairly, very, very. The conservative, conservative transfer, and that's what.
Yes, sir. But again, on top of the second page, you can get it. That's really good.
Yeah, I see it now. Capital reserve transfer. And one of the things that we've been discussing about the budget, and to have two or three different fallback things, the capital volumes that we're looking at purchasing would be back in January. So we'd have the first quarter and second quarter coming in to be able to see our actual numbers. And if it got to a point where we didn't see those numbers coming in, we could reevaluate the capital expenses that we have this year and rerank them once again and look back at them and then look at that. And then ultimately, you've been putting money back for each, each department into the capital reserve. If it came down to we had to have this one item, we could always go back to the reserve and be able to pull the money back out, as you've been putting back for these items. So there is like a one, two, and a threefold looking at the budget for us to have a way out at the end.
And that is the 1.58. And it is the 1.58 you're talking about there.
Yeah, so metaphorically, the man is trying to number it, you know, called capital reserve. Okay. Just gonna make sure I got the picture right. And that is what y'all, this council has been doing for the last two years, was putting money back into reserves to be able to fund these items. And so there is something there that we can be able to fall back on.
Well, yeah, this is, this is the rainy day.
Not yet, Bo. Not yet.
I'll talk to him now.
Thank you, Scotty.
Land the plane safely.
Love it.
Much as we can, hopefully as much as we can, water, 368,000. Give water, wastewater. See water river. 368. Done a little. I'll sink here. I'm wearing a bag, but I didn't have to go back. I'm wearing a bag, but I have to go back. Transfer.
That will happen.
It's going to be after. It's right back.
It's near the fee schedule. It's near fee schedule. Back of the book.
It's the first in front of the debt summer issue.
I think it's great.
All right, what am I looking for? Capital reserve?
Now, late request.
Purple or gray?
Purple. You find it?
This is coming. Counselor, the department is going to make a presentation. Presentation to general fund. And you've got requested five hundred and ninety-six thousand seven sixty-four. And the next page is. And the department is holding forty-eight five hundred and one. For the. This is. Sign up here.
There is only one item that we would ask to be able to purchase in July. If it goes through, and that would be the decorations for Christmas. As we wait till. January, we might as well put it in next year's budget. If that's what you would like to do. I think it was forty-seven thousand.
I'm going to use this voice. Initially, this was in Scott's part, and then we moved it from operations to. And.
I think that's something we can wait on. Agreed. Agreed. I'm but.
Mr. Calipari, the department is. Get in the trap that you want to, or you're not getting. I can say that. I don't have money. On employees, I think. I think we should like. Scrooge.
That's no problem. We can read all the ones we got. Yes, sir.
And we did it. Money in for completion. Some more money there at that.
All right. Thank you.
But again, this is on two pages, you can see what capital has been requested.
So, Mr. Mayor. That is our budget as we presented.
Anybody got any questions?
No, I didn't, actually. Of course.
Well, that's a. Nice. Got to stay there.
I shall be brief.
We're chasing.
I'd like to. No, we'll be changed, won't we? The interfund transfers, that's the next. So, for example, let's just take the first one. Which is thirty-one dash three hundred dash three thousand. Transfer from the water fund, wastewater debt service. What are we doing now?
Yeah, and this. There's a change. Water pressure. Part sort of. And then. To not deal. So. All of the. I want to. With the additional team.
This, I guess, is set up this way. So water, good. How does it slow extreme?
Okay, so that's. That's the reason for the transfer.
Yes. Need that money for.
And. It was standing in the department, and that would go away.
Yeah, so you've you've got a number of transfers here. Look at forty-four eighty, ninety-six, thirty-one. And the transfer. We're looking to fund wastewater debts. Seems to be a lot of movement here in dollars.
That is money coming from the sewer. To the.
Debt service.
Pay for the debt service of wastewater. Due to the amount that we're saying we're going to be short on receipts.
How about this? This transfer to. Beer complex fund.
What? These six.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
May not have to happen next year if they if they're here, as I said.
Now, I'm looking at forty-five, seven, forty-five, ninety-six, thirty-five, the last one. It's half a million dollars. Well, that's a typo. That's not. It's a typo. Should be. Because it's going to be to the project.
That is a. From the beer complex to the beach renourishment project.
Yeah, that is a typo.
What's it supposed to be?
Where's it coming from? It wouldn't be coming to the complex. He'll go back through. All right.
It is coming from accommodations.
Okay. I know it's been been a long process, and we have another meeting, so I won't belabor this.
But this is the age. We did your. I think you should.
Spend one more time on. Because in effect. Now, now, we're moving money across. If you like, right?
Yes, sir.
The hand card system. People will understand that that's how this budget is actually balanced. I won't take the time to go through all these, but that would be helpful. I actually would like to spend more time on this in the next session.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any question? Thanks, David. Can you get a quote, a price? So we have. To repay half the street. Get that quote.
I thought you already had it.
We have a. I mean, we had the plan two years ago, but we can look at that.
Yeah, because prices. I mean, really, they should be down. I'd like to see that. I'd like to be able just to have it in hand and see it.
And the second thing is. What's the time line?
Yeah, because. Here to June, I don't want to say it's eight weeks before we get the truck, and we're already in the pile, and there's land piled up everywhere, and we don't have one truck to build to.
We've got.
One of them got here within five weeks because of the. So. I would say look at the process and go ahead and get something started. Think about approving this and get the truck already started. With the budget.
Slam if they'll flow us some credit.
What did you say?
Took you on first.
Look at it. I mean, there's no sense having a grapple truck in seasons almost always, knowing you've got land piled up all the streets. Right, if you can go ahead and look at it and see what needs to get it started.
Yes, sir.
In weeks.
And we're still working on getting. Pretty time for you. Scott's working on getting that recovered for each part of the. On the main inside.
Yeah.
Wow. You're talking ten weeks is mid-June. It today.
I ordered today, I'm just saying.
That's what I'm saying. That's.
If we were in June, we're looking at. September, if we have a storm. Not going to believe we don't. I'm just thinking, trying to. I don't want to see all that. It's possible.
We need to go up before the end of the fiscal year, what you're saying.
If there's some way to get something moving on it.
We can issue the PO. July first. Before we. We can do it. From this budget to the next budget.
Yeah, I mean, they may be willing to go ahead and get busy. But we're not waiting that whole timeframe when we go ahead and get to the budget.
I would be prepared to. That's because it's a capital item.
And the saving forty-seven thousand dollars is light.
Well, you know, it's. An excellent job. And so what I'm hearing is that. We've got very conservative assumptions in there. Now, we hopefully will exceed. And their revenue, lower costs. We have the. Realized funds from debt service. Okay, now, that's one fallback. We've got essential all capital held, except for the grapples drop now. It's fallback number two. And then we could transfer from the general fund if we had to. So. I like the. The. To this budget. I want to get. In addition to the grapples rocket, which really came to show. Probably some other things in capital we absolutely have to have. So we don't really have one six there. Less than that. Some of that stuff we have to have.
Agree.
So that's more of a vague number than the six hundred thousand, which we know we're going to have. We don't know we're going to have. And the fact that we've lowered our assumptions. And hopefully, we're going to go up. Unfortunately, as Councilman Bell said, we're not dependent on the accommodations tax. I'm providing an accommodation. Got a fair sum of work you gentlemen are on this budget?
Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to shorthand it for the public who are listening. Those are firewalls that are.
Yeah, he'll totally come. That's the main thing.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Bell. Anytime.
Well, I'm good. You want a motion? A motion to recess this meeting till next Friday. May eighth at one o'clock.
Second.
I would say. I kept eyes on the month.
Looking at Lisa to make sure I'm saying the correct date and time.